I mean, the judge placed them all on there. I'm the only, the mayor and I are the only elected-
They all sent a letter saying they wanted to be on there.
That's right.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Wow.
I'm the, the mayor and I are the only elected officials on the borough.
Wow. I didn't know that. Hey, Smithy, how you doing? Not bad, work yourself. Not too bad.
They all had to say they wanted to be on there because Judge Aronman said he was going to appoint somebody who didn't want to be on there.
That's right. And the president's only been there twice. In two years.
The thing is, is it's not exactly like there's people banging the door down to be on council.
Well, I was, I was trying to boost, uh, Claire Waterhouse. I think he'd be a good, he was military and-
I don't know him.
He would be a good guy.
Yeah.
You know Claire?
Yep.
Exactly.
Claire Waterhouse.
Sure. You go to school with Chris Waterhouse or?
I don't think-
He'd be older than you but younger than me in his days.
He wouldn't be afraid to speak up.
Yeah.
They're a little apprehensive in making decisions.
Yeah.
They, I just got emails. Did I send you a copy of all the emails? Fifty-nine pages? From North Central?
Oh, yes, you did. I did not look at all fifty-nine pages.
That's all done without approval of council?
Exactly, exactly.
Wow.
Although sometimes these things have a deadline and so since they haven't had a meeting, maybe that's the case.
Yeah.
Cause she did mention North Central at the last meeting that they had.
Mm-hmm.
And said she was looking into some funding opportunities there.
They need to get out of that building.
Mm-hmm.
That is an albatross.
Mm-hmm.
They could build a three bay. I had drawings already, when I was on council, I had drawings ready for like a three bay garage and an office for the secretary.
Right, and that's really all they would need.
Yeah.
As long as the office would be large enough, they could hold a council meeting in there. I have some other municipalities that have that similar situation to that.
Do you happen to have copies for the public for your agenda?
Yes, it's laying at the end of the table.
Thank you.
No.
Do you want one?
Sure, I'll take one. Thank you.
Are you a seven-member council or five?
Five.
We're seven at one time.
Really? Four of us on here. Been a long time.
Coldport was the same way.
I said it's pretty bad, even we weren't not keeping five on here in this town.
I have one council that's gone to three members.
Hello.
Hello.
Enjoying this warm weather?
Yeah.
How are you doing?
Well, I fell on my butt yesterday.
That's not good.
Hurt my shoulder and my back if Stephanie or not Stephanie Madison wouldn't have came along and heard me screaming out in the backyard, I might still be laying there. I like to kiss the ground every once in a while.
I tell you about, it must've been last summer, honey, Pete fell over there when he was laying in the sun.
Yeah, uh, Harry told me about that.
Yeah.
It was hot yesterday when I was laying out there, so I only had to lay about ten minutes till she came along, but I looked at my phone and I, or my Dexcom and I knew Michelle wasn't going to be there for at least sixty or forty minutes. And I sure didn't want to lay there that long.
Especially in the heat?
Uh-uh.
That's when she felt, she was laying right in the sun and it's all that.
That's the way I was yesterday and I, or hit my back against a four-by-four that we have where the gate's at and-
Well, you're up and walking, so at least you're, I mean, I'm not being smart, but-
Oh, I know, I broke both shoulders, I completely crushed this one.
Could've been, could've been worse.
Could've been a lot worse.
Yeah.
It's like August, it's still warm, isn't it?
The water, authority means, submit your name to the public. Just like ours though.
Mm-hmm. But- Did you sign up for the convention?
Not yet.
In Pittsburgh?
That's what it comes, did they ask him about?
I think that's the best thing I-
I know.
That you learn a lot.
For now.
Were you down at the ball game or are your kids playing ball down there?
No, they don't have a Jugs team down there, so we play the league.
Oh, okay. I heard them yelling, I just wondered.
Yeah. It'd be convenient if it was down there.
Yeah, it'd be convenient.
Did we get any, won't you know, walk-in room?
I don't know the names anymore.
I know the last time it was on the first, like-
Yeah, I know.
Most people didn't think about it.
Amanda's not coming.
Smithy, do you know anything about a house over in, um, Swanktown that don't have no electricity or water and people's living in there?
Not you ask or do.
Okay. We've got two different homes in that's doing that right now. No sewage, no water, no electricity.
One's over in Crestview?
Yep, and the other one's over at Swanktown. I just heard about one in Swanktown today.
Is that not permissible?
Why can't you live without sewage?
Well, the problem is one lady dumped sewage in the backyard.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Yeah, she's going in a bucket and dumping it.
Over there?
Yes, she's done it for years. Well.
Interesting.
Chill. I can't even believe this. I got the first lead thing, uh-
You did.
Yeah.
You were first?
First time I've ever been pulled over for speeding.
He's seen him going to work in the mornings, I don't think he ever-
That's why I said that too, yeah, that's why I brought it up.
How many of you have?
Me?
No. Chip me.
More than my share. Yeah.
That's what I told the cop too, we just got, me and Ash went fishing down East Freedom and we was coming back. It was Sunday, there was cops everywhere. And I was somewhere down at a Lamburger, like towards, you know, hometown or whatever you call it. There were JD's dad lives on the curve there.
Yeah.
He was sitting right there, he was thirty-five through there and I didn't know it. I was going like fifty, he pulled me over, so.
Did he get a warning or?
Nah, he gave me fine.
They have a lot of unmarked cars too.
He was marked, he was just in a good spot. No, I don't have my wrench or something, I don't have one.
No, he's not.
I just, you know, coming off that hill, I was just kind of coasting really, to be honest with you, but I pulled the cop too, I said, you know, I gotta, I wanna tell you something. What's up, bud?
Good for seeing me.
First time I've ever been pulled over for speeding. And I drive, I've driven a lot, he just shook his head.
Did you get a ticket?
Yeah, he did.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. But sorry.
I only ever got the spot once and that was out in Ohio, I was going to Missouri to my grandpa's funeral and they left me off.
Yeah. First time I've ever been pulled over for speeding.
But if he would've started right to ticket, he would've stopped.
At graduation time, Julie's the head of the Sunday School Church, so she'll get the seniors and stuff a Bible.
Mm-hmm.
We were in a hurry, so we took off and we were flying to Altoona. Jimmy Williams pulled me up.
Oh, and that guy?
By the beard or stir beer.
He let you go?
He looked at me, he says, cause I knew him, he says, why are you going so fast? I said, well, you want the truth? He said, yeah, don't lie to me. I said, I'm going to buy Bibles.
Yeah.
He looked at me, he said, I have never heard that before.
That's funny.
He said, he let me go, let me slow down.
That's, Ash, she's like, you gonna fight it then? Nah, I ain't fighting. So why would I take off work to go, you know, lose money, waste their time, but I was paid five, it's like a hundred and some bucks.
You have no more cat money on anymore?
No.
So that, that wipes out forty bucks right there.
Yeah.
It should be about two hundred and forty.
Is that right?
When you get the court costs on.
I don't know what it is.
Yeah.
I know the paper gave me like a hundred and, I don't remember, fifteen bucks or sixty bucks or whatever.
My, the magistrate will add on to it.
Hello there.
Hi.
Your back for you, please? Just about, well, I got laid out too. Oh, God. You and Karen John and Stan family and, what about Donald?
Nope, he's staying home.
Oh, he's staying home. He was reading all the papers. Where are you going this time? On this, oh, has he been there before?
Somewhere down there.
Little turn home?
Somewhere down there.
So.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we treat those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but to the rest from evil, for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Ah, two, three. That's all that I got.
You must not have counted that one time, huh? Was it just me, you and?
Yeah, I don't count.
Oh. Yeah, you know.
John Cohen?
No.
No? Maybe not.
A motion has been made to approve the amendments in the financial court. Twelve seconds, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public comments, who would like to go first?
Jerry was here first.
I'm just here to observe.
Okay. Go on.
Oh.
We have the letter from the VSW for the Bridge Project, which could be whatever the next step is, I guess, those two dollars after this. So we should call everything you need from us first. If you need anything else, just yell.
Now, uh, we just kind of come past the park. Those cars are parked off the coast of Nine One One Memorial. You were going to put stones in, you better get a hand.
Okay. We were looking at, uh, our next step here.
Yeah.
Since a lot of money, we put the wall on like we wanted to do, so they're talking about, you know, an alternative plan right now.
Okay, yeah, because they're, and I was going through stuff from the Harrys up there and I found all this stuff. But Joanne had already applied, sent a letter for a historic bureau of, for the museum commission, which is something about the building.
Yeah.
So here you go, girl.
Well, give me something to look at.
Yeah.
Is our building on the historical list or not? Is our building on the historical list?
No, but like you have to put it on there before you can, that's the whole thing.
Okay.
I don't know what all the balls, uh, I have all, a lot of the information about it, but there used to be a door there for the fire company.
Yeah, you can see it from the outside where they changed the brick.
I don't have any pictures, you, and we need to find somebody that has pictures of that.
Jerry Cohen's probably the guy to ask.
Yeah, okay.
Cause he, he should remember it's the truck they used to back here, it was a fifty-eight.
Yeah, I had Boy Scouts in here. In the office.
So I don't, uh, I guess it didn't happen for her.
It was never here when I was around.
Down there when I was a kid.
Yeah, yeah.
One burnt down.
Yeah. And pull that thing on the super end building.
I heard that, I don't remember that.
That was short-lived, I think.
And, uh, yeah.
I would just like to remind the people that are doing the memorial, I think they're doing a really good job down there, but just please don't blow the grass on any monuments or any of them.
Try to blow us in our direction.
Please, that would be awesome.
Yeah, we can tell them.
Thank you, thanks.
See, have a leaf bar, if he does get it over there, he can blow it off.
I think so.
They have the crystals, it's a thing about VR down here.
Yeah, they did that today. They did that today, didn't they?
No, I don't know, but sure, they're helping us with the memorial. They're gonna help us.
Yeah, they cleaned out under the cannon early today.
Yeah.
They're gonna clean it.
It has to be painted, they're probably gonna do that. Yeah, we, we got some helpers now, that's good.
Yeah.
Uh, Dick's doing well, but he's, a lot of the stuff he can't do and he just help anymore, you know?
Yeah.
But he's doing good, Karen sees him every day.
Is he walking? Does he go walking?
With his wife, he's hanging out by himself, yeah.
I was gonna act, my wife, I was gonna stop there and see.
Love to see ya.
Yeah.
I think that's all.
I hope so. You sure?
No. You mean if it pops in here, it's coming out here.
All right then, moving on, now?
Okay, I have a check here for four thousand fifty dollars for, and twenty-seven cents for taxes I collected for the month of May. And Sean would like to go to the convention again this year. I figured it out and it costs each taxpayer dollar and a quarter to send us. And we get a lot of information from there. Jerry, this was his first year there this year and he can also tell you, it is really an eye-opening experience. And when we belong to that confederation, if we have any trouble or anything, they will pay for our lawyers and everything through our dues and that. And this year it's in Pittsburgh and I think it's second or third week of October. Unions pay for two days of our room and we pay one day and you give us fifty dollars for gas and pay for our classes. Last year I brought in sixty thousand dollars to the borough through meat club and taxes. And you've never had one time, I've never had a trouble with an audit or anything in thirty-some years that I've lived.
Well, I'm gonna still complain about spending my taxpayer money for that because-
Well, it's a dollar.
Some of them are necessary, which means-
Do we, uh, we have to walk through it?
Okay.
Well, we have to get our rooms and everything, they book up really quick.
Yeah, yeah, we should have full board for that.
I think we did, I did that.
Get everyone's input. Hopefully next month we'll let them know for sure.
Okay.
Mayor's report.
That's really nice that you even consider.
Yeah.
Coldport doesn't do anything like that.
Coldport refused to pay his.
Are they still having, did they get straight around when they're having meetings again?
No.
Well, there's a lot of cases that do pay for it because there's four hundred and some tax factors there.
Yeah.
I think I remember when you told me when you went to one of them, you were the only ones in Clearfield County.
I'm not now.
I'm not arguing anymore.
No, neither.
As I said in my piece, I'm against paying my-
That all you have now?
Yep.
Okay. Any committee reports? Mark Fierder, pulling a car show or anything.
Supposed to be a hot weekend.
Yeah, good, at least it's not gonna rain.
Yeah, I hope not.
Yeah, that's, that's a bad problem, it seems like we only rained on it.
Yeah.
All right, if we have no committee reports, we don't have a mayor's report, or do you have one?
No, he said he doesn't have anything.
Okay. Well, hopefully we're down to maintenance, I'll, I'll hand that over to you.
Um, Joe said that he went ahead and got on the list, he went the brush hog for a week for the levy, so.
Just no idea why.
He's on the list, he said he's trying to get it like back up, so, somewhere else.
I finally talked to the people at Groff, like this kid's deer stuff, they won't even talk for any kind of numbers over the phone without looking at it. So this is the guy's name, cell phone number, he said to have either you or Joe call him.
Okay.
And set up an appointment, he'll come and look at it, take pictures, then he'll go.
Okay.
We should have some maintenance records for that.
Well, that's what I thought, that's why I went with them. They were the ones that did the most recent, you know what I mean? They got down and got it.
Yeah, that's, and we need to, if we do get a new one, we need to make sure we get it up there once a year for, it's a service.
But that guy said he'll work with you guys if you, you can set something up.
Okay. So I have any notes?
Um, I do have something for Joe to do.
Okay.
At the end of Emma, the way everyone comes from Burrow, you know, and cuts up over the hill, someone's gonna get killed pulling out of Emma Street. You can't even see the sign anymore, the pressure's grown up over on that corner. He needs to, if he, if he can't get in there and cut it, get some, get some good killer, kill everything off so it dies off and you can actually see through there. I ain't wait anyone used to come up and come down that hill and try to pull out.
Yeah.
You're three quarters of the way on the road before you can even see down the road.
They had two different people confront me, not a confrontation, but asked me, I guess, about grass cutting.
Yeah, I was gonna-
Did anybody call you?
Not yet, but I'm gonna, that book you gave me, them papers?
Yeah.
Is that in there or not? Or is that just the one that we were dealing with?
Hmm, I think it was the one that we were just dealing with.
Okay.
I don't know if I gave you all the copies.
I don't think you did, that's why.
Yeah, cause it'd be like really thick.
I was trying to find it so I could see what the, is there like a measurement?
I don't know if they call it a measure or not.
Is there a measure in there?
I know the one property was the old brand of vacant lot.
I've seen that one and there's, there's a couple of other ones.
It's cleaned up.
There was somebody that said about the grass and then the other person didn't tell me, they said, they under, they said, well, we won't talk here, you know, they said, I should come to a meeting. Yeah, you should.
Yeah, bring it here.
And I, and they said, well, if I can't make it to a meeting, who do I call? I said, well, you can call any one of us, we're home, so.
Yeah, and you can give my number out if they call you or something, I don't care.
I don't know what, which property that one was about.
Yeah.
Well, I know of a couple that I'll get with you, I'll just, a paper.
Okay.
Okay, that's all for maintenance. Review of correspondence, resignation letter.
I got a letter from Drew, um, he said that he wanted to let us know that he's putting in his notice I will not be working for the borough anymore and my projected last day will be at the end of May. Thanks, Drew. He's done.
We gonna advertise for another one?
Yeah, we should.
Yeah. At least have someone here to back up and do something.
Yeah, get them drained up before the snow comes.
Yeah. And also someone that's have a driver's license and a driver, clean driver, I think we can insure them. All right, full business.
Uh, just a reminder about the levy inspection, June twenty-ninth at eight AM. They usually meet here at the borough building.
What, what day is that gonna be?
June twenty-ninth.
Okay. Moving on, new business now.
All right, on trees. So I know that there was a couple people that were upset about these trees that got cut down at the park. Um, they actually have a grant program out that municipalities that are eligible to receive twenty barefoot root trees for free. We just have to apply for them, we have to pick up the trees and plant them ourselves and we have to like maintain them. But I don't know if that's like something you guys would be interested in, like replacing, you know, those old trees with the new ones.
What kind of trees are they?
You said fruit-bearing.
Yeah, twenty, twenty bare root trees.
Oh, bearing root.
Problem with fruit-bearing trees, race theories is on the property line.
Or even if we could, you know, just-
It's like the one-
You know, I don't know.
The property owner didn't want pine trees there, cause they were getting pine cones of limbs, they probably not want fruit falling in their yard either.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a nice idea, we, wouldn't have hurt us if we bought them, where would we put them?
What about along with the park here, like coming up the old road or the tracks? I'm just saying, you know.
If you get ahold of the ad hoc committee and see if they have any, any preference.
Yeah, that's not bad.
Where they would, where they would want them.
How long do you have, you have to fill the ground?
Uh, June twelfth.
That's not that far away.
We're all right with it, it's, if you-
Yeah.
Can get with them and, yeah, we're okay on it. Cause that's their committee and they, they want to take care of park.
All right, I'll ask them. All right, um, I did look into a time clock. So if we want to get like the paper card one, that one costs anywhere between fifty and seventy dollars, just depending on the make of it. And then like the digital ones cost anywhere from one hundred to one fifty. It can go up more, of course, depending on the brand, but that's where I priced them on at Staples. So I don't know. The only problem I have with a time clock is when they do their payroll sheets, they write, they do a log on what they do and I have to separate everything from like the borough, street and flood. As if they would do a time clock, I wouldn't know what they're doing unless they're continuing to do a log.
They would have to do both.
Yeah.
But the time clocks, it's, it's always when they're here.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, this is the old paper ones, you can change the time on those, the digital ones you have to have a code.
Oh, you can change the time on, on them?
Even the digital ones if you have the code.
Yeah.
So you might, we might be better off getting a digital one.
They even have like a fingerprint one, you can, you can fingerprint.
Huh? That's a little over.
He doesn't know James Bond. Uh, we, how much is that?
That one's between a hundred and a hundred and fifty.
You might need a motion for that. Uh, yeah, just get one.
Okay. All right, cameras. So I met with Mainz Technology Solutions, um, to get cameras, security cameras here, so there would be one in here, one out here, one down in the garage and then one outside the garage. Um, that estimate came to three thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Um, and then I asked him, cause we've been looking into getting cameras for the park, so I went ahead and he did a separate quote on that. It would be one on the bathrooms at the park, it would keep watch of Lake of Memorial and every, the surrounding areas, and then one back by where we keep the equipments and stuff. Um, and that was five thousand one dollar. So I don't know, so it would be a total of eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars for, for a whole, like the whole area.
Those cameras have sound. That's the next, that's another question I-
It probably has to come with a monitor of some sort.
It comes with a lot of stuff. He said that he is more than willing to come to one of our meetings and answer any questions that you may have, bring pictures of all the, um, stuff he would be using, so.
I think that'd be good.
Thought he was senior when he was doing, for sure.
Maybe if he can get him here for the next meeting?
Yeah, especially, I mean, here's the part, there's a lot of activity down there.
Yeah.
Maybe that would help.
Then with the, with the monuments, there's a lot of money invested there between the two, a lot of money and time.
Oh, yeah, definitely, I couldn't, some of my head, what we've got.
Yeah, yeah, and you, you can't charge for your time, cause you're volunteers. You figure what you have in there, there's a lot of time and-
Yeah.
Lot of work.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Lots of sweat and tears.
Well, even from a liability standpoint.
Yeah.
You know, somebody would ever, you know, they'd get hurt, you know?
Yeah, I'll come to our next meeting.
Okay, that sounds good.
Um, flags. I did get the flags from the VFW. They did donate them to us. I'm gonna go ahead and send a thank you letter to them. Um, Brian Peacock, whenever he brought the three flags for the memorial, he went ahead and put them up himself and I thanked him for that. Um, and then, then he brought the other flags here, so.
Do you need us to get rid of those for you? They're kind of bad shape.
He, uh, Joe took them. He takes them up to the VFW.
They have a ceremony for that.
Yeah, they do.
When my, when my boys was in Cub Scouts, we used to go along and gather them up for the graves for the VFW.
Jeff Ryan's your new commander. I'll be the new commander up there. This group right over here.
Um, and next would be, we need to pass a resolution twenty twenty-three oh one, um, for the amendments. Not the amendments, I lied. The bylaws. They need the amendments to their bylaws. So we have to pass a resolution.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh one. Avona Borough Council approves the Avona Veterans Memorial Committee amendments to their bylaws. Adopted and enacted at the meeting of the Avona Borough Council held the first day of June twenty twenty-three. Do I hear a motion for that? Okay, she's made the motion. I'll hear a second. Tom seconded. All in favor? Aye. Resolution passes. I can't sign that. I've seen that in the reg down.
That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone have anything else?
I was just wondering, since we're on the list, to get that film or rental. Do you think, did they send Joe like a rental, anything?
Like an agreement?
Well, I don't even, I don't even know if it has to be an agreement. There's something in writing. That way if we don't have it by the twenty-nine, we have something written down. We can slide across the table.
Get approved that we're gonna do.
That we have it rented and that we rented it, whatever, May twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
I will ask them and then go probably contact them to see if they can write up something.
Yeah.
If that were to happen.
Yeah, if that were to happen, that way we at least have something.
When I expect the levy, is that in the morning?
Yes, it's eight AM.
Eight AM?
Yep.
It is twenty-nine. I can look. If you don't be hungry.
I think it's a Thursday.
Okay.
What was the full name of the individual that submitted the resignation and what did he make an hour?
Uh, it was Drew Antle and he made eleven dollars an hour.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's all we have.
Did you say it was the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-ninth.
It was Thursday.
We don't have anything else.
I'd like, I have to say something now. I'm the favorite now in the mowing, as long as she gets her money from the school and the county to pay their share of that seminar.
Well, they're not gonna do that.
Well, that, yeah.
Everybody else just has their borough.
Yeah.
Do it. And like I said, there's three hundred or five hundred and some people there now. And at one time I was the only one going from Clearfield County, but now there's a lot more going from Clearfield County. They put us in groups, go through the questions and everything.
The borough should pay, I would, I never, you get money from both. That's my, I mean, I, that's the way I feel about it.
You know, we're lucky we get paid from the county.
Have you heard any more about that other property you found there?
I agree.
Okay, cause he extended it.
There's some people don't even look for the county because they don't pay him.
That's right.
Sixty more days.
Okay.
Cause I guess he is.
Yeah, I've seen he, he did clean some of it up.
He is getting it out there, it's just.
Taking a little bit of time.
Yeah, so he spoke with, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
If anybody asks.
Okay. Okay, motion was made to adjourn?
Certainly.
All in paper?
I just have something to say. I've had more bad checks this year than I've had any year. Of people writing a check out. When they write a check out today, I had someone write me out a check. Last week for four hundred and some dollars. I had a meeting cut to tonight and do my reports. And that person come to my house at three o'clock today. I had to run up to the bank. Last month I had someone that bounced a check. She didn't show up. I had to take five hundred and some dollars out of my checking account. And pay her taxes or I was gonna hurt the check count bounce. And I've already paid Amber and I already paid the borough or the county, so I was gonna come back on my credit. And I was gonna have a check charge on my account. People don't know what the tax collector has to go through. I'm glad Jerry's here today and listening to what we have to go through.
Do you have a fee schedule as a resolution? I, I think I asked tax collector at the, at the meeting. Included in the fee schedule, I have, there's a sixty dollar charge for, for not paying a, uh, having a return check.
Grabbing the link of check.
Yeah, and I serve a letter to them by certified mail and in ten days I turn it over to the state police. That's what the magistrate instructed me to do.
Well.
So.
Yeah, but when you're on a deadline and I have to have my papers in and it makes me look bad and my credit and stuff look bad.
That happened to me too.
So. I've had four so far this year. That's the most I've ever had.
I don't know, I mean, unless it was a family member, I don't know if I'd stick my neck out like that now.
I know, but what am I gonna do?
I know, but you know what I mean? Today, you, you can.
I know. I, I get stuck with it is what's actually gonna happen someday, but I can't do that to people. I've been a tax collector for so many years that I love working with figures. And if I would have had a chance when I was a kid to go to school, I would have went for business. I didn't have those chances when I was a kid.
Right. Well, it's still outstanding. I had to put fifteen hundred dollars in, out of my savings account into the checking account. Or else I'd had overdraft, 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 overdraft. And borough won't do anything about it, but.
And you get one overdraft, your credit's ruined.
Yeah.
And just so happened last month, the woman that told me she was coming, told me she would be there that day. She didn't show up till three days later. So my money was tied up in her bill because I tried to do a favor for her.
We're gonna have to contact our solicitor and see how we can draw that up.
Yeah.
Do, do a legal route on it and just.
Cause I was gonna either have to call Amber or I was gonna have to call Clearfield and say, hey, hold the check because there's money not there.
Yeah.
Just like today, there wasn't enough money to pay until that guy come and gave me his money. And I called the bank to make sure his money was in the bank before I even went and deposited it.
So you didn't wait a week and have a return check again?
Yeah, and it'd been on me.
And they're the same ones all the time?
No.
That time was, usually it's the same people.
Hmm, two of them's been business people.
Oh, boy, well.
Was, did my check bounce?
No. But if I tell you who they were, you'd be shocked.
They go to supper.
I'm trying for you.
Everybody at home.
I can't see somebody home.